Good evening, everyone. Thanks for joining us. Tonight is the June 14, 2018 Town Board Work Session. Everyone, please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, for my supervisor's announcements, tonight, actually, we have a guest with us. Mrs. Bonnie King. She's a principal from John Jay High School. And we'll be presenting her with a proclamation for herself and for John Jay High School's 50th anniversary. It was, two weeks ago, was the anniversary party, which we had to miss, unfortunately, because we had a town board meeting. But I didn't want the occasion to go by without acknowledging them, so I'll go down and present it. Yeah?
That's beautiful.
How are you?
Thank you.
Thanks for joining us.
Thank you.
Proclamation. I'll read it. Says, "Whereas the John Jay Senior High School was built in 1968, due to the growth in our community, the Wappinger Central School District built a grand public high school in the town of East Fish Gill, New York. And the John Jay Senior High School's population is greater than 2,000 students in grades nine through 12. And it is the belief of John Jay Senior High School that active and continuous learning is essential for individuals and communities to flourish. And John Jay Senior High School has had over 20,000 students graduate since its opening. And many news agencies have ranked John Jay Senior High School in the top 10% of high schools nationwide. And John Jay Senior High School has challenged their students through the years with a wide variety of elective courses to meet the needs of our community. And the town of East Fish Gill recognizes the commitment and accomplishments of Principal Bonnie King, her staff, and administration, who have aided in this success. And now, therefore, the town of East Fish Gill is proud to acknowledge the commendable work of Principal Bonnie King and to commemorate the 50th anniversary of the John Jay Senior High School." Ms. King?
Thank you so much for the continued support of the community and the parents. And I know many of us wear many hats in this area. And it's just been a pleasure to work with an amazing team, some who are here tonight. And even Chief, we all work together, and we're raising these kids together. And some of them were even my students. And so, thank you for the honor of serving, because I love what I do and I love these kids. So, I guess, congratulations to all of us. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Can we go up there and take some pictures?
Yeah, absolutely, yes.
Okay. That was very nice.
I'm so honored. Thank you.
Thank you, Principal. Welcome. So, tonight is our work session. Tonight, we're going to have a little change of plans with our work session. We are going to have, from Earth Care, Mr. Michael Larsson. He is going to give us a presentation about how we're, when we implement the watershed protection law, how they can help, or other companies like his, can help the residents with their septics and what goes on, what the process is. And afterwards, I will allow question and answer time tonight for this. So, why don't we get started? Mr. Larsson, thanks for joining us. How are you?
Very good. Thank you. Like you said, Mike Larsson, I work with Earth Care. I've been with them for 15 years now, started in the field, so I know it from the guts up. I'm now the regional manager for the Northeast Region.
Right.
That includes New York, Delaware, New Jersey. Put this presentation together. Just a simple overview. It's going to be the layman's terms version of how this all works.
That's perfect.
Go to that first slide. It's going to be just a simple statement. You can prevent unsanitary and costly onsite septic system failures and realize the greatest possible longevity of your system if you understand how your system works, why it may fail, and what preventative maintenance measures you can take to avoid the problems. And that's just a picture showing a septic field failing. If you see that, you want, there's issues with it. So, how a system works, the first slide here, it's showing the two types of tanks, a concrete septic tank and a plastic polyseptic tank. That's what is basic on all residential houses. The raw sewage flows into a watertight septic tank, and that's trapping the solids and the floating scum from getting out of that tank. First step, the sewage flows from the home to the septic tank, and the flowing sewage hits the inlet baffle, which is right there. The inlet baffle is designed to slow the flow of the water down coming from the home, which helps to prevent the settled sludge on the bottom from getting stirred up and passing out into your drainage field. The waste flows into the tank, solids float to the top, that's that scum layer it says on the top there, and creates the solid scum layer. As the solids break down, they cause a sludge layer on the bottom of the tank. This liquid between the solid layer and the sludge layer, that's known as the effluent water, that's what you want passing out to your drainage field. That's what's considered the clean water. The outlet baffle, which is right here, sits approximately halfway down in the tank. This, right here, is the most important part of your septic tank. It prevents the solid layer here from exiting the tank and going out to your drainage area, and it doesn't sit low enough to let these sludges pass out the bottom of it. So, as the top layer gets thicker and the bottom layer gets thicker, the influent, the effluent level here constricts. As this constricts, it allows more of these sludges on the bottom to pass up through the baffle and out to your drainage area. This is the main reason why it is recommended every two to three years to pump your septic tank and fully evacuate your system. The lighter these sludge layers stay, the less passes out to your drainage area, and the longer your system's going to last you. There's a couple different drainage systems out there, and it's just getting more and more every day with alternative systems, peat moss systems. I just did here your standard, basic bed and trench system, which is going to be at most residential houses right now. The effluent passes from the tank to a distribution box, which is right here. You could see, right here is where it's going to come in from the tank. It's going to go into this box. It's going to distribute out these pipes evenly amongst the field. Some of the effluent is drawn to the surface of the field and evaporates. The remaining effluent is purified as it passes through the stone and soil and into the ground and eventually replenishes the groundwater. How and why septic's fail? When a system fails, it's going to either overflow onto the ground surface, which is right here. You're going to see bubbling up into your yard, or sometimes it's out in the woods, but you'll see it. Backs up into the toilet sinks and will pollute the groundwater and the surface water. So, that's why it's so important when a system goes into failure to take care of it right away, because it is going to affect everything around you. And if they have a well, it's actually going to affect your well. So, some reasons why a septic will fail. Clogging in the drain field caused by neglect, not pumping it, and having accumulated sludge pass from the septic tank to the field. Inappropriate system design, and this is something that you'll know right away if you have a system installed, and it's installed wrong, it will fail within probably two or three years. They should last anywhere between 20 and 30 years on a standard system. Poor installation. Heavy vehicular traffic over the septic system itself. Excessive surface runoff. So, if you're on, you know, on the bottom of a hill, if it's running into the field, it's going to overload that system. Except the solids and grease. Adding any chemicals, pesticides, acids, paints, all that stuff, it can't go into the septic system. Garbage disposals are another thing that is really not good for a septic system at all. And just some preventative maintenance tips here. Don't overload or abuse the system by adding excessive water or chemicals that clog the system or pollute the groundwater. Avoid garbage disposals. They add excessive solids to the system. The more solids you add, the more that's going to pass out to the drainage area, and that's what's going to clog up the stone out there. Don't flush sanitary napkins, disposable diapers, cigarettes, or any other solids down the toilet. No oil or grease down the drain. Any solvents or acids, except for, you could use your normal household cleaners, bleaches. Not a bottle of bleach down the toilet. That's not helping your septic system. That's only killing the bacteria that's in there. Water-saving devices on the sinks and showers is going to help save your system. Don't connect your roof drains or basement sump pumps to your septic system. We see that quite a bit, and it just, it overloads the system and puts it into failure immediately. Same thing, leaky faucets or toilets that run. That little drip constantly will overload a system as well through a couple of months. And just maintain your septic tank properly by having it a full evacuation every two to three years. And most importantly, make sure your baffles are being inspected properly at the time of service and they're intact. And that's about it. That's the basics of how they work and why you maintain them. Any questions on that? We're, I'm good to go, so.
So, thank you, Michael. So, let me ask you a question. When somebody calls and they want their septic to be pumped, you go out to the site, and now we're going to require them to have a inspection. Can you tell me the process with that?
On a basic pumping, it's going to be a, it's not going to be a full septic inspection, meaning we're not going to open up D-boxes. And what we're going to do is come out, open your tank up, pump the tank down, inspect the baffles, inspect the drainage area by probing down into the stone layer, making sure it's dry stone in there. If we come up with wet stone, it's the system's near failure at that point. At that point, there's measures you can take to try to alleviate the problem by opening up the D-box, the distribution box, jetting lines, adding some chemicals to it to help get the system back online and going again. And we used to do, it was called a tarel lift, where we would probe down into the stone, and you'd shoot almost like those little foam balls that when you open a package, they go everywhere. That's no longer allowed, and frankly, did more damage than good, honestly. So, they did do away with that.
Okay. And you provide them with documentation that you inspected the tank?
Well, we provide them with a, we're all paperless now, so it comes on a tablet. We show exactly what we did, the condition of the system, things like that. Now, most towns that we deal with that have the, this in place where it's an agreement where they're going to pump it every three years, the town provides us permits.
Okay.
When we're done with the pumping, we filled out that permit, and we mail it into the town.
Okay.
So, that way, you are fully aware of the pumping took place, the condition of everything, and it's all right in front of you.
Okay, very good.
And a lot of them do a tri-copy, like, three copies of it. So, that way, we keep one on our file, you keep one, and we give one to the homeowner after the time of service, so.
Okay, great.
I just have a couple of questions. On the older systems, before they had the concrete tanks, or obviously, they were the steel tanks?
Yes.
So, what do you see with steel tanks that are still in the ground?
We recommend immediate replacement.
Are they typically?
Immediate replacement of a steel tank. Yep. Yep.
And what are you finding when you do locate them? I mean, are they, how are they failing? Baffles fall off?
Baffles are falling off. The tanks themselves are rotting. I mean, they're just, they're a safety hazard more than anything. Tops are flimsy. They've just been in the ground too long. So, that's where we just, that's how we handle it. We kind of just got to replace this.
And what about for those who don't have septic fields but basically have the old cesspools type of setups?
If the cesspools are functioning, then they're still good. I mean, it's, you know, the, seems like, just like the old cars, the old cesspools, they knew how to build them back then, and that.
So, how do you inspect those? I mean, so basically?
Same basic thing.
You inspect them and say it's operating fine, they can.
Right. So, say it's a seven-foot cesspool. If it only has two foot of liquid in it when we get there, you still have five foot of room in there before it goes into failure. So, still has life left. There's really, some towns, I know Westchester's kind of outlawing them. If we come across them and we report them, they have that three-year pumping, so we have to fill out the permits. We fill out it's a cesspool, they make the homeowners go to a basic, to a regular septic system now. Us being in the industry for so long, if it's working, then it's doing what it's supposed to do. It's all built the same way as these new systems. It's just laid stone, with stone around it, doing the same exact thing.
Do you actually do the installs, or do you just do pumping? You do installs as well?
Yep. We do full installs.
But obviously, a homeowner, if you get a report out that says you need to replace, a homeowner can go solicit prices from any contractor.
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. Yep. Yep, we're just making the recommendation that it should be done. You know, it's the homeowner's money. They're going to do what they want with it, but we can't say that, you'll watch, be careful on that. You're going to get sometimes a lower price. The select fill might not be select fill. It may be done, there's a reason why it's $10,000 less. So, we just tell them, just be cautious, use who you want, but, you know, most of the time, we're.
Are you getting the same quality of installation?
Right. So, most of the time, we're going back and.
Because the homeowner typically is not going to know what they're using for material.
No idea. No idea.
And the town doesn't inspect that, and the health department will issue the permit, but they typically don't.
Right. Now, what you can do is, if you wanted to, and we do have this in certain towns in Jersey, it needs to be certified by the quarry that you're getting the material from. Certified clean stone, certified fill, and it needs to be put in that way, and the engineer won't sign off unless it is. So, there is a way around that. But most of the time, if it's a cheaper system, we're back five years putting in another one.
And are all the companies now licensed, required to be licensed by some agency?
Yeah. I mean, they are.
Well, we're talking about, as far as the pumping, as far as the pumping, you have to be licensed to be.
Yes.
Because you have to, you're transporting it, right?
Yes.
So, by virtue of that, you have to be licensed.
Yeah.
The installer, that's a different story.
Right. Right. So, you have excavators that do foundations.
No, that's what I meant, more about the pumping.
Yeah, but the pumping, everyone has that permits, and trucks labeled and numbered and.
Right.
Okay. We have a unique position, because we have a disposal facility of our own that we own in Beacon, so.
So, have you ever come across these type of systems in an area where they don't have a lot of surface to put a new system in? In other words, let's say you have a quarter acre or smaller than that, in a clustered area where there is multiple houses one after the other. Is there a different system that you would recommend? Because I heard, I heard that there are systems out there where there is a filtration system within the tank that allows, you know, the, whatever material goes in the tank to be purified.
Yep, so these are the alternative systems that I was talking about. So, you'll have, there's tanks that will do the treatment within the tank, running through UV lights, things like that. Then it discharges out to just small lines, and it's basically just a, they call it a drip system. So, it's, you know those sprinkler lines you put in your garden that just kind of mist the water out?
Yeah.
Very similar to that. And it's just dripping. It doesn't need any kind of stone or anything out in the yard. And you could just run whatever acreage they have, and it just drips into the ground, and you're fine. It's already treated.
It's on top of the ground, no?
No. No, it goes, it's about 18 inches under the ground.
It doesn't freeze? You have to worry about freeze-ups?
Right. It doesn't freeze. Doesn't freeze.
How does the cost of that compare?
Sorry, go ahead.
So, the cost comparison is approximately the same. It's pretty close, because the tank and the system itself is more expensive, but you're not hauling in all of the select fill material, so it kind of balances out. It's a little bit more, but it's very comparable.
But you need less area? Is that the idea?
Need less area.
Less area?
Yep. Yep, there's also peat moss systems where they're pods, usually eight by six. You need a pod per bedroom. So, if you have a three-bedroom home, it's three pods and a tank before it. So, it's very little space it takes up. Those are nice, because when they fail, because it is limited ground, you take the tops off the pods, you take the peat moss out, you put new peat moss in, cover it up, you're done again, so.
And as far as maintaining those filtrations, do they have to call you guys, or can the owners do themselves? How involved is that?
So, those systems do require specialized pumping, because they have filter bags in them. So, you do want someone who knows what they're doing. Most of the time, they're also required to have a service agreement with whatever company
They choose.
You're putting in.
Right.
No, so it's all, so one of them's called Awigo. That's just, I'll throw a brand out there. So, if you, if we installed their tank and their system, the homeowner's required to have a service agreement with Awigo. Not with us, but with them. They monitor the system, high-level alarms, things like that. So, if anything's going on in that tank that shouldn't be, it directly notifies the company. They call the homeowner, and the homeowner could use over what they want to provide the service. But it is a requirement when you install those types of systems.
So, would you say that in a cluster community, you would advise this type of a system over a regular, if in case you have to replace anything?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, those are.
Especially if it's near a water body?
Yeah. Yep, now, that's one of those, you know, an engineer will design that. So, we don't design the systems. If someone needs a system, an engineer goes to the site, designs the system. Once they design the system, we need to install whatever was designed on site.
Right.
So, we have no say in what's going in there.
And the engineer will be.
There's times we go, this isn't going to work. We really don't have, we don't.
It would be an engineer from the company that sells the system, right?
Just any, any engineer can, will design it.
Okay.
Well, any engineer that does septic systems. We work with a few. We don't have anything in-house, only because of, you know, conflict of interest there. So, we keep it, we outsource our engineers, and then we just work with them, so.
What's a new system ballpark? Not trying to nail you down to anything. What would a new system cost?
You're anywhere from 15,000 to 30,000 on a, on a normal, basic system. And you run into, I mean, it depends on what you're getting into.
What you've got to bring in?
We sold them, you know, we have them going in for 120,000, some of them, but your basic, everyday system is about 15,000 to 30,000.
And when you say two to three, every two to three years, how many people are you talking, living in the house?
That's anywhere from, I'd say, three to six people. Now, if you get into that, you know, you have 15 people in the house, it changes things.
Oh, not you.
But if you've got one or two people in the house, you could actually go?
Well, yes, you can. So, I mean, you could pump a septic as often as you'd like. The more you pump it, the longer it's going to last.
Yeah. No, I'm just saying, like, you got, like, one or two senior citizens that live in the home.
Yeah.
They shouldn't be pumping it every three years, probably, they could probably get away with four.
Oh, yeah, you could get away with it. Now, I'm in the industry. I've seen this my whole life. I do mine every year.
Yeah.
So, and I have four people.
Mike, let me ask you. Some people were questioning, asking me about these baggies that they would flush down their toilet once a month, that has enzymes and bacteria that help break down everything in the tank. Do you recommend, or do you know anything about those?
So, yes, I do, we do recommend it, but I only recommend buying it from your service provider. They sell a live cultured bacteria. We do. Pretty much all the companies do. These Riddexes, things like that, they're an enzyme, they're not alive bacteria. The difference being in that is an enzyme will break down the solid layer on the top. The byproduct of the enzyme is a sludge. As that sludge gets thicker, as we were talking about, starts passing out to the field, and that's what ruins your drainage area.
Gotcha.
So, a live cultured bacteria will digest the sludges on the bottom and the solids on the top, but the byproduct is water. So, it's keeping everything in the tank lighter and less sludge. It's not eliminating it. So, whenever I tell people, it's not a magic potion.
Right.
Because when you put this in, you don't ever have to service your tank.
Right. So, maybe, instead of every two to three years, maybe they're servicing every four or five?
We still recommend the two to three years. Putting the bacteria in, as that bacteria flows out to the drainage area, it's helping to digest anything that's already gotten out there. So, instead of maybe getting that 20 years out of it, you might get that 30 to 35 out of it.
All right, gotcha.
So, it's, you know, it's just helping to prolong the life of the system.
Gotcha.
Now, you're saying a system that we were talking about before, with the special filtration is 15,000 to 30,000?
They could be a little bit more, the specialized ones, but not much. You're looking maybe 35 on them, somewhere in there. Like I said, it's all going to depend with that engineer designs, what he inspects, what he expects for the contractor to put in.
With the same lifespan?
Approximately. It's hard to say with those, because they're brand-new. So, we don't, none of us want to get nailed down on that yet.
Okay.
Because it's two to three years now, they've only been on the market, so we don't know. We haven't seen the lifespans of them yet. But they're claiming, they're claiming it's the same lifespan.
And that approximate for the, the cost of the system, it depends on also two to three bedrooms, four to five bedrooms, whatever it is?
Yes.
Right.
So, the bigger the house, the more bedroom the house, the bigger the tank requirements, the bigger the field requirement.
Okay, gotcha.
So, yep.
Do you have an approximate cost for an inspection, when you inspect a septic system?
Home inspection, as in a full inspection?
Yeah.
We're around 750 bucks, and that includes the pumping afterward.
And without the pumping, do you know?
We don't do it without the pumping.
You don't do it without the pumping?
The full inspection is opening up the D-box and everything. Typically, you just pump the tank and do the inspection of the tank.
Right.
That's your basic.
What's that a basic cost of?
That's part, so that's, that's right into the price of our pumping costs.
Oh, so the inspection of the baffles, what we would ask for?
Our basic.
That's included in the basic?
That's included. That's what we do. That's, that's what we expect, expect every one of our technicians to do.
But you do have a maintenance program where you come and inspect it on an annual basis?
We do.
Yeah.
Yep. We do have a maintenance program where every year, we'll come out, we'll put a gallon of bacteria in the tank, inspect the baffles, inspect the field. Every three years, we come out and pump it, do the same thing, add a gallon of bacteria, inspect the field, baffles. And that program that we run, it's $190 a year to be on that program.
Oh, that's great.
And it's automatic. You don't have to be home for it. We're just servicing it. It's like a utility at that point.
Do you help locate the tank? Let's say somebody moved into a house, they have no idea where a septic tank is.
Yep.
They call you, I don't know where my tank is. You'll locate the tank for them and all that?
Yep.
Expose it, you'll dig down, expose it, okay.
Yep.
You charge extra for that, or that's in fee, or?
Most of the time, our technicians, our drivers can come right out and locate the tank without any additional help. The digging is extra, we charge for digging. If we can't locate it and we have to go out with a locator, that is additional. But most of the time, I'd say 90% of the time, our technicians will find that tank, so.
Okay. Anybody from the audience wish to ask any questions?
What do you think of infiltrators versus a standard, conventional piping?
It's pretty much all the same. It's, you know, same basic theory. It's coming into the infiltrators, it's going through stone and draining down through the bed.
Infiltrators don't last longer?
No.
They don't?
No. I, we haven't seen them last longer. I, we haven't seen them last longer. They claimed it at the beginning, um, but it's got about the same lifespan. Yep.
Do you have the camera that you can put at the D-box location?
Yep.
How far can the camera go?
Three hundred and fifty feet. And we can video record it and hand it to you after you're done, so. Yeah, we have, we have all the good fun gadgets to play with and-
So, with that said, that raises a good point. If a person buys a house-
Yep.
It's three bedrooms when they bought it. Who knows what it was when the septic went in? You can put the camera in and tell them forensically exactly how much field they have.
Absolutely, we could do a full layout, full, uh-
Because that could happen, you know, it was a one-bedroom, turn into a three-bedroom, did, did it ever get expanded, you know, if it was done many, many years ago and-
Yep, and we see that, you know.
Because the camera makes it, yeah, you can figure out exactly where it is, 'cause then, once you put the camera in, you can locate everything, right?
Yep.
You can trace it, okay.
Yep, we can, we can map the whole field out.
What do you think about live yeast for the septic? I mean-
Doesn't do anything.
No?
Nope.
If you get a borrow yeast, like, uh, they might use for dough or whatever. Why?
It, it, it just doesn't do anything. It's just an old wives' tale. I mean, you throw a rabbit in there, throw a dead squirrel in, throw the yeast, but it does do anything. It's just, it's not doing anything for it. It's, uh, I know all the, you know, some old farmers and stuff believe in it, but it's really not doing anything.
I don't mean bad yeast.
Nope, it's, it's really not doing much for it. Unless it's a live cul, a live cultured bacteria, it's not doing much for your system, so.
Mr. Grasso hasn't been farming in many years, though, so.
Yeah, we hear that all the time. We've opened tanks up, we see rabbits in there, like, what are you doing? Like, come on.
Rabbits, wow.
That's funny.
Let me ask you, um, you say in some towns, maybe Westchester elsewhere, there's a permit that actually is taken out when you do a cleaning?
Yes.
So, so is that to say that it's, like, mandatory in those towns that have permits?
Yes.
Okay.
We have to. Um, we actually have to go to classes every year in Westchester, well, in order to pump tanks. They teach us how to do our jobs.
Is it just some areas in Westchester, or most Westchester's mandatory?
No, it's a county permit.
No, but I mean, is it, is it mandatory in, in all of Westchester that you pump every so often?
Yep.
It is mandatory, okay.
Entire county, Westchester.
Entire county. And what is that, three years, or, you know, it is?
Three years.
Every three. You know how long that's been in place? Any idea?
Well, I've been here fifteen years and it's been in place since I started, so.
And it's not just around reservoirs or anything, it's the whole county?
The whole county. Yep.
What's the benefit of pulling a permit?
They just wanna track that it's being done. They wanna make sure-
Is there a price to pull the permit?
No. I mean, we get charged a couple dollars for it, but we don't pass that on. So we just, we just eat it and that's that.
Why, why can't somebody stick the tank and see when it's filling it, so you, uh, pump it?
Well-
Again, you, you go back, if you get one elderly person or something in the house, you know, ev- every three years or even every five years, and you got so much room left, why?
Well, there's, the tank is always gonna be full. It's always gonna be at this outlet, I'll show you here, in this. So the water level is always gonna be at the bottom of this.
The water level, but I mean, the water, the sludge.
So the sludge on the bottom, without, it's under the wa, it's under everything. You're not gonna be able to see where that sludge level is.
You mean, you can't stick that?
Well, you could stick a stick down there, but you're not, by the time you pull it back up through all the other layers, you don't know what you're getting on that stick. You know, it's just a good, like I said, I, I've been in this for years, I see the disasters, I pump mine every year. 'Cause the less you keep in that tank, the less sludge in there. But the reality is, is it's a, it, it's a cheap maintenance compared to the big expense, so.
What is the, for a twelve, for a twelve fifty tank, for a twelve hundred and fifty gallon tank, what's the normal fee to pump that in?
Um-
Inspect it. Round number, you know, no one's gonna hold you to it, but range.
Three hundred and twenty-five bucks.
Okay. So if you average it out over three years, it's about a hundred dollars a year?
Right. Right, that's what I mean. It really is a cheap maintenance for-
Really is, yeah. When you consider if you don't maintain it, what, what expense you could lead to.
Right.
It's like changing your oil filter.
It's exactly like changing your oil.
Should we say this by the gallon, so you probably have two tanks? Twelve hundred and fifty gallon tank, the others are five hundred gallon tank?
Yep, so what we, how we do it, um, we charge up to a thousand gallons.
Up this one every five?
So we'll just do the easy math on this. Say we charge two hundred dollars for a thousand gallons. Two hundred dollars for that first thousand gallons. Anything over that, we prorate that, uh, two hundred and fifty gallon thing. So for that, it would be an additional hundred and fifty dollars on that second tank.
Would you continue that prorate?
Per gallon, if there were two tanks?
Yeah.
And they were both exposed?
Yep, as long as on the same property, yep. Yep.
So, Mike, that, uh, and not that I, uh, we don't hold you to any number, I, you said the three twenty-five number, that's for the, an average home that would get a pump out and they get the inspection also?
Right.
Okay, so for our, uh, instances here, uh, we're gonna require that every five years, and, uh, basically, that would be the cost every five years?
Approximately, yeah.
Right, okay.
Now, if they wanna do, if they wanna add a gallon of bacteria after that-
Right, then à la carte, whatever, you know, you discuss with the homeowner. But if it's, uh, that's, uh, what if a smaller home, if it's a thousand gallon tank or a seven fifty, it's a little cheaper?
Yeah.
Okay, gotcha.
So let me just ask your experience, what's the normal frequency, the towns that do impose this regulation, what's the normal frequency?
Three years.
That's normal?
Every single one we do is three years.
Nobody's out five years?
Yep. Not one. And like I said, we do all of Westchester. There's a couple counties in New York that, little towns that do it up here. Um, quite a bit in Jersey. There's six or seven different townships that require it.
Mm-hmm.
So. I'll just be honest with you, they charge us about three bucks a permit, so. Just, I probably shouldn't say that, but it's, uh, but it is paperwork on your end, so. And, uh-
And people that have some homes that, uh, come up every couple of weeks or whatever, they're still gonna have to pay that expense?
Anyone who's in the watershed, anyone who's in the watershed?
Does that make a difference if house is empty half the year, in terms of what's going on inside the septic tank?
Well, it's actually, because it's not being active, you're actually getting a more breakdown of the solids and creating more sludge by it being stagnant. So it actually has an opposite effect almost.
Oh.
Because it's not being used that much.
Okay.
And that sludge is really the important part. The solids on top, they're gonna be held in the tank by those baffles. It's that sludge on the bottom that is gonna get stirred up and passed through the system. So that's, that's the concern, is the, the bottom layer, more than anything.
Gotcha.
What are the ramifications of failing systems? What are the things you've seen happen that compel people to, you know, meet the requirements of pumping and so forth, maintaining a system?
Uh, meaning what happens?
Have you seen wells contaminated? Have you seen streams?
Yes.
I mean, it's, the, the reason we do this is because of-
The ground pollution. So, we have seen it where, you know, we'll get calls out of order complaints, and you'll run their faucet and you can, you can smell septic in the faucet.
Oh.
You know, and it's, it's not, that's not what you wanna be drinking, obviously, so.
Yeah, actually, I've heard of it. It comes through people's well water.
It's just a smell, it's just an odor. I mean, if you test it, it's, it's, but it, you get the odor, and it's, and you know, the requirement for their install is a hundred feet from the septic bed to the well. Now, the times we've seen it, that, you know, the well was a lot closer than, to the bed than it should be. Um, but it can happen, and it, and it does pollute the water.
Are point wells much more susceptible to contamination than deep well?
I have no idea about wells, so. But, I, no, a deep well, obviously, the deeper it is, it takes a lot longer for-
Safer.
Yeah.
Okay.
So the three twenty-five, that would cover all the inspections that the town is requiring, and it would basically put you on a three-year cycle, which is why you should clean your well, uh, clean your septic anyway.
Yep.
Yep, and it's something if, you know, if, if you got that whole watershed together and said, this is your service provider, I mean, we would, we would work with it at a whole different level of, of pricing. So, you know, there's that option too, and I, you know, I don't wanna constrict people to their decisions, but-
You mean like group, like a group price?
Yes, exactly, yeah. Group price. That, you know, we would absolutely work with everybody on. And, uh, and I'm not even saying everyone have to use us, but, you know, if you made us a, a vendor for that area or something for them and let it, them know, we would definitely work with the price on that and-
Would that go for installations also?
Um, probably not, because that's a lot of material, that, it just is what it is. Um, a lot of the install is just material and time. And it, believe it or not, there's not a whole lot of profit in installs. So. We do them 'cause it's kind of a-
For the rest of the business.
Necessary evil. Yeah, yeah.
Right. Anyone else? Any questions? No? Okay, Michael, thank you.
Absolutely.
Very informative, thank you very much. So, next town board meeting, we have our, uh-
Can we skip to number three?
Yeah, I'll skip over to, yeah. Next town board meeting, we will be having our public hearing on the, um, on the watershed protection law, and we'll, uh, discuss even more in detail, um, about this. But I thought this was a good idea to get everybody an idea of what actually has to happen with your septic, about pumping it and getting it inspected. So I think that, uh, I guess, uh, we did, I did what I wanted to, give, give an overview of, um, what will be done. Um, anybody have any other questions about, uh, the, I gave you a copy of the, the, uh, subsurface sewage disposal system law that we're uh, gonna be presenting. There's part A, if you have read it, and then part B. Part A is for the East of Hudson, and part B is for the uh, Hillside Lake, um, watershed. And basically, it's the same type of, uh, idea, except in the East of Hudson, there was just a couple different, um, categories than the Hillside Lake, but basically, it's the same. Uh, Scott, did you wanna add anything?
Well, I just wanna add, it, the, the draft law is on the website, along with the boundary.
Oh, yes, we put him on the website, yes, thank you.
So, people that wanna, you know, look on the website, they can see whether or not they're in the watershed or not.
Scott, I got updated, the, uh, the graphic on the last page is chopped off.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, we'll take a look at that, okay.
The last page you said?
Oh, the last page of the law. The bound, the boundary's okay, but are you talking about the last page of the law?
No, uh, the, on the boundary, the boundary graphic is cut off.
I thought it was just one, I thought it was just one page.
The graphic, the map, you're saying, yeah, okay.
This, this map?
Yeah.
Saying what?
It doesn't, you, you can't see the bottom of it on, on the-
On my-
You can't see the bottom of it, okay.
Thank you.
Take a look at that, thank you. No, the only thing I was just gonna add is that we were looking at a, a two-year time limit.
For the initial.
For the initial, you know, so even if we enact it tomorrow, people still have two years to actually pump the tank.
Right, you'll ha, thank you very much.
Another reason why we don't wanna push it down the road, and, 'cause you still got two years after adoption.
Right, right, no matter what, so everyone knows if we do enact this law, you'll have two years to comply, and then after that, you'll have up to five years to, uh, pump your system every five years then, after that.
Did you guys make any headway on the grant through Duchess County?
We're still waiting on Duchess County to say who's going to administer it, but I did, uh, talk this, uh, week with somebody from the DEP, actually called me, about, they have a similar grant for East of Hudson. They're up to twenty-five thousand reimbursement, fifty percent. They're, they have a larger share. And they says they grew because of, uh, um, more communities put these laws in place, and they showed that it was working, so they were able to fund it more. So, hopefully, that will happen here, and we're fortunate that only East Fish, I'm sorry, only Hillside Lake and Sylvan Lake in all of Duchess County was, uh, pinpointed for that grant, so.
I agree with you, however, the dollar figures that Michael was mentioning and spreading seventy-five thousand dollars gets the real thing.
Absolutely, so that's why, the more we can get, the, the better it's gonna be. So, um-
Which were seventy-five thousand?
It, that's right, up to seventy-five thousand, they'll just, they'll, uh, pay out, but it's a shared program where they'll pay up to twelve thousand five hundred, right?
Fifty percent, yeah.
It was fifty percent, I'm not sure if it was ten thousand or twelve five.
I thought it was twelve five.
And it was fifty percent.
And it was fifty percent, so-
Up to twenty-five thousand, basically.
Right, so if the system costs you twenty thousand, they will pay ten, you'll pay ten.
Up to as over seventy-five thousand for the whole area?
That's right, but there was only two areas pinpointed, and that's every year.
Okay, and my impression that's gonna grow?
Well, the thing is, so if the money's in that pot and it doesn't get used, what's the chances of it getting funded, refunded, right? So if it's used and you have a system in place that, that uses up that money, then, then you can get it refunded, so.
Yeah, I would-
Sure it's a test to say, are you gonna use this money or, or not use this money? Because why keep funding it if you don't use it, you know?
Uh, I, I agree with you.
So the key is to try to get it, get it used, yeah.
So it's extremely important to get the word out?
Absolutely, we've been trying to get somebody with Duchess County to see who's going to be administering it, and we're waiting. They have their own, uh, personnel issues, um, and, and the reason, um, uh, East of Hudson is greater, because New York City is contributing the money for the funding, because the, uh, improvement in the East of Hudson area and the watershed helps New York City, uh, put off building a filtration plant. So therefore, the New York Ci, the New York City taxpayers are paying that twenty-five thousand dollars to hopefully defer other infrastructure within the city water system, so. That's the difference in the payments.
Gotcha.
Considering how much money we send down to them, I think it's a drop of the bucket.
Yeah, we do. So, in two weeks, we'll be, uh, having our public hearing, and, um, we'll finish discussion then. So we're gonna skip number two, uh, we're gonna go back to it, we're gonna go to number three, discuss our pre-existing fence and sheds. So, there's been a lot of hubbub, I should say, about fences and sheds recently, and actually, for, for a long while. Uh, I wanted to bring it up to the board to have a discussion about the possibility of, um, having some sort of amnesty for current fences and sheds that are on properties. Uh, maybe we can, uh, choose a date, uh, you know, maybe six, uh, a year ago, six months ago, whatever we decide. Uh, and anything before that will be, um, exempt. If they can prove that it's been there with, you know, pictures or bill of sale or whatever, and then we don't have, uh, any of this compliance issues from that point forward. But anything from whatever date we choose going forward, they have to, um, they have to comply with the zoning laws. So, um, I wanna have general discussion. What do you, what do you, what do you guys think about that?
I think it's a very good idea, um, because, like you said, it, it hasn't been, this has been going on for quite some time, and, um, recently, uh, talking to some constituents, there seems to be a, always a problem with fence and sheds. And, um, if we can sort of bring everybody together on the same page, it would be nice. And I think an amnesty would be good, as long as the public would know exactly what it is that we're looking for, and exactly what it is that they have to do. This way, they can get to the, um, to the building department and fill out the required things that need to be done.
Right.
And sort of get, we have to get the word out, though.
Yeah, and we'll, we'll have a time period, I, I, I'm assuming, where they will have to come in, and maybe a year or so, that they could come in and prove that they've had a fence or shed there on their property for five years, ten years, whatever it is, and they don't have a permit, and they'll be grandfathered in from that point forward.
So, either would the intent be to create a database for the town, the town, uh, the building department downstairs, that they would know that so many thousands of people have come in, and, uh-
They are now in compliance.
I, I think that's, that's a good idea. You're always gonna have some people that are not gonna, either never heard of it, or-
But that's why we give a long period of time, and we advertise it, and, and then it's their own fault if they haven't, uh, I mean, we're offering a-
Yeah, it's a good deal.
Because the penalty, correct me if I'm wrong, if you have a pre-existing, or if you have a, a shed and you never got a permit for it, and you're gonna have to pay twice, right? Twice the fee?
It's twice the fee, that's right.
As-built, yes.
And the as-built fee there is.
As-built.
So you have to pay for the regular permit and then the as-built fee.
Right. They gotta go in front of the zoning.
If they're not in-
If it's not-
If it's, if it's too close to the line, or if it's too big, or what have you.
Right. That causes a lot of-
Just so I'm clear, the amnesty, let's say you have a shed that meets all setbacks, but you never had a permit. So basically, you're just gonna be granted a permit, that's pretty straightforward.
Right.
The, the, when you're too close to the property line, that's where the, the real rub comes in.
That's right, well, that'll be grandfathered in also.
So, so let's just say you're five feet from the property line, instead of fifteen feet, whatever it is, you'll be grandfathered. Now, are we gonna do an inspection as part of this, I imagine, or?
I'm, I'm, that's why we're having discussion, I, I think-
Let's just say your, your shed is only five feet, but you store things behind the shed, or whatever the case might be, and, you know, you're really impacting your neighbor. So I think we just gotta weigh that.
Well, I, I think that it's not for outside storage, I think it's for the shed, and it's for the fence.
So it may have to be an inspection done as part, and say, okay, as long as you clean up everything and put everything in the shed.
Right, if the neighbor complains, saying, well, he has the shed here, uh, well, he was granted amnesty, he came and proved that it was there, uh, but he's got all this stuff outside the shed and it's on the, the property line too, well, then we'll have to go out and do the inspection, and they'll have to remove that.
All right, so I mean, as part of this, are we gonna give the, a neighbor notice? How does that gonna work, that, you know, 'cause I just think-
I think they will be fair.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah, whatever, as much notice-
Case there's an issue that, so we get the whole story.
Much notice as we can.
Yeah.
It will be fair, I-
Let's say it's a fence. It's a god-awful-looking fence. You know, before we just grant amnesty, I think we need to, let's take a look at the condition of this fence and make sure it's, you know, suitable fence.
It's not falling down and broken and everything else, right?
And an eyesore, you know.
Right.
Or, or the shed, for that matter. So I just think we need to make sure that we have a few things in place.
Right, so if they come out and they're like, well, I have it, I, I put my fence up five years ago, and here it is, I want the amnesty. We'll go check it out. If it's in good shape, if it's in good condition, then they'll meet the criteria to get the amnesty. If not, we'll say, well, you have to fix it a little, fix it up, or paint it, or whatever.
I, I tend to agree with Scott, the, the point that he brought up, that I think that the neighbors have to be notified, and at the same time, again, there are people now that they don't live in the community all year round, so if they miss the notice, and now we're making a shed a permanent thing, and somebody's not around, says, you know, I wasn't around when you guys enacted this law. I, I think that notifying also the neighbors, and the neighbors have to be in agreement with whatever we're, we're trying to, to, uh, to put in place, i- it's also extremely important.
So give me an example.
Well, just-
No, wait, wait, wait.
Well, like, let's just say, right now, you go to the zoning board for a variance. Okay, the neighbor's gonna be notified of that appearance before the, so that neighbor has a chance to speak. So if we're gonna grant amnesty, okay, maybe it's not a trip to the zoning board, but that neighbor should still have that chance to speak. You can't, you can't deny the neighbor that opportunity to voice concern.
That, that seems fair to me, too.
But if it's in compliance, the neighbor does not have to be involved with that.
Well, we're making a compliance.
If you meet setbacks, then you don't, you know, then you don't have to get the neighbor involved if you meet setbacks.
The, the major emphasis for this is the fact that, uh, over the many, the last two decades, the distances for sheds and there's been, um, a lot of changes made by the town. Addressing, as the town grew, they made changes. So you see that a lot with the, people have to come to the zoning board of appeals. Secondly, yeah, many people who bought homes, there was no question of the fence or the shed, and then it becomes, when they wanna do something else, it's discovered. So it was just, this system would at least allow everyone the opportunity to come in, prove that the shed or fence was there on a certain date. Many communities, then, when they get that application, it's complete, they just send a form letter to the adjoining property owners saying that, you know, this is, you got ten days to raise any comments or issues, and if they don't, then it's registered, but the people have to register it, and then that fence or shed can remain, but if it has to be replaced, they have to then comply with the existing law at the time. It's all- It's only to allow it to, to go forward as is. So this would eliminate it being a violation if they go to buy or sell their house. It would not be a violation if they got a permit to add an addition on. And it, uh, as the councilman said, will give us a database that everybody comes forward, they say it's there, we know it's there, and, you know, we go on.
But then I, I, the board has to be in agreeance that then going forward, the zoning has to be administered correctly.
Correct. 'Cause then after that, if you don't register it within the time period, if you give everyone a year or whatever you give them, after that, any shed that's found not to be registered or to be out of compliance, they have to deal with it either through the zoning board or moving it.
Right.
And what's the timeframe that we're looking at? What do you think is reasonable?
Well, I think, um. I think the town of Wappinger, when they did the shed law on this, they gave them a year. Uh, they, you know, they picked a date as the supervisor said, you know, anything that was there, January first, uh, of X year. And then they gave them a year after the enactment of the law to come in and register it and get signed up.
If we, if we thought about this, I, I was thinking that we pick a date of December thirty-first, two thousand seventeen, or something like that. And from, no, no, no. Anything from that point back.
Okay, check.
I mean.
Well, uh, Scott and Tom, you guys being, uh, more Tom. Uh, when, when we made these changes in the town codes and laws, uh, would you say, is it been, well, in the last ten years that the code has really been created where right now, in the last ten years, whoever built ten years.
Well, I mean, we go back and look, in the last ten years, what comes to mind, I know we changed some of the setbacks on sheds, uh, because I think there was.
That was recently.
Right. When the sheds had to comply with the same setback as, uh, not, as a home, and that ended up being too close. So we moved it. Uh, the side yards have changed. Fences, not so much, uh.
We made a change to allow the six-foot fence to the front yard.
Front yard, right, but.
'Cause we allowed a pool in the side yard, so.
So in the last ten years, probably not that many. But prior to that, there was a period of time, um, that there were like five or six changes and all those things within a short period of time. Because I guess the town board at the time was trying to address different changes taking place in the community, so.
Since we're starting with a fresh slate, should we review the code in regards to fence and, uh, sheds? This way we could, uh, go forward under one unified code.
Yeah, in fact, the town planner is working on some suggestions for the board, uh, about modifying some of the fence provisions, um, because. Yeah, because we had so many, we have so many issues with fences, uh, not only past fences, but also going-forward fences, that she's putting together a memo to the town board about some thoughts that you might wanna address as part of a zoning change.
Great. Thank you.
I thought, if your fence is under three feet.
You don't need anything.
Five feet, right.
Right, can't be.
But you gotta register.
Four feet.
Four feet.
You don't even have to, you never had to get a permit.
No.
Right.
And if your shed was under so many square feet, you'd never needed a permit.
You don't need a permit, but there's a setback.
Setbacks.
You have to meet a setback. So this law is dealing with the setbacks. I think now it's a hundred and.
Forty-four.
Hundred and forty-four square foot shed or less, you don't need a building permit, but it does have to be, meet setbacks.
What is this, Scott? You, right now, what are, what are basically the setbacks? Is it a hundred and fifty feet from, oh?
I think we changed it from twenty-five to fifteen.
In the rear yard, yeah, it can be fifteen.
And from the side, I think, I think we got it up to close to fifteen.
We'll give you a try on all that, but, uh, yeah, I don't have that right on my fingers.
But there is a size limit, uh, to, to get that relief on the.
So any fence that's under four feet, they don't even have to call in a register?
No. No, that would change.
How many four?
You don't need a permit for a four-foot.
How many three-foot fences are there?
I got one.
Okay, you're good.
I'm good.
You're grandfathered in.
My fence is good, too. My shed is, too. Now, just for that one, Scott.
Okay.
How many sheds are you allowed on your property?
Well, under the current law.
Under the current law.
One without a permit and as many as you want with permits.
What'd you say?
One?
Without a permit and as many others as you wish with a permit, which is an issue that you might wanna consider.
Yeah, maybe we should limit the amount of sheds based upon acreage or something, I don't know, whatever's fair.
Then you got, you got pools, cabanas versus lawn care.
Well, that wouldn't be defined as a shed.
So you gotta be very, you know, specific.
Right.
You can have your pool shed, you can have your lawn mower shed, you know, or whatever else you might need or call it.
I think that.
A dollhouse in the backyard, is that a shed or is that not, not considered part of it, you know?
Right.
I agree that it probably, there would be a good, good discussion to, before we, we do this, uh, to, uh, take one last look at, and probably simplify it a little more if we can. So that people, when they come in and apply, it's really spelled out, this is what you could do, this, I mean, you could have, without reading a manual, to really find out what, what's in it. Hey, I kind of agree that probably having a discussion would be a good thing.
Well, yeah, he said the, the planner's gonna give us some feedback.
One of the concepts some towns are experimenting with, with sheds, is that they, they give you a, a percentage of the side, the size of the house in total square footage of your sheds. So I don't, you know, I know she was looking to see how that's been successful or not, so that's one.
We did that with detached garages.
We did that with the garages, if you remember the detached garage.
Yeah, I remember, yeah.
Only be up to seven hundred and fifty square feet or ten percent of the footprint to that, which one?
Two-thirds, I think.
Yeah, two-thirds.
Sixty percent or something like that.
But it, to keep them in ratio, because we were having houses that the garages overshadowed them. Um, so things like that, so they're also working, in other communities, they're doing that with sheds and a similar thing. And of course, a shed is specifically defined as not having a concrete floor, because then it becomes a garage.
There's a lot of things to consider about sheds, so.
So if you wanna put a shed, but you wanna put a concrete floor, now you, that's considered.
Because then it trips into the requirements of a garage, and you can do it if you can meet all of the requirements for a garage.
But you can put a concrete pad under your shed.
I think, I think.
No.
Have a wood floor. No, that's a concrete foundation.
I, I think the way it works is, to be deemed a garage, you have to have an impervious, an impervious floor. It could be blacktop, it could be concrete, then it, then it's a garage. I think shed has flexibility. I think you can't have a shed on, on a concrete floor.
But it has to be dimensionally prevent the vehicle from being parked.
Garage has to have a concrete floor, yeah.
Doesn't it have to do with the footing? One verse is the other. I, I mean, if you have.
Well, the footing comes into play depending on the square footage. I think the state building code says, depending on the type of construction.
Right.
Roughly at six hundred square feet, you gotta have a foundation, you gotta have a full footing.
See, the state uniform building code, New York State, has all these requirements. We don't set the hundred and forty-four square feet they have.
Right.
So under a hundred and forty-four square feet, there's no regulation as to what your shed is, how it's structured. After it goes over a hundred and forty-four square, you have to get a building permit. And in getting that, then they go to the state code, and the state code has, uh, the requirements based on the sizes of sheds and the structure and everything else.
So in other words, if, if you put a shed and you wanna go and pour concrete on the inside of it.
If you're under certain dimensions, that vehicle can't fit in, you probably could be allowed, but we'll, we'll.
And it also has to do.
I wasn't ready to get into this discussion, so.
It also has to, I think, a garage can be in a side yard, a shed has to be in a rear yard. So there's a lot of little things that you have to navigate through, yeah, that we can, you know, make it.
But as proposed, the amnesty would only apply to sheds and fences.
Right. And, and I'm happy the board is entertaining this, so we'll have further discussions about it. I just wanted to get the feeling if I should go forward with thinking of this, or I'm not gonna waste my time, so. If you think, okay. So I'll look into it more, I'll get some, uh, proposals of what we should do, and we'll have another discussion about it.
Right.
And, um, Mr. Grasso has many sheds and fences, I think, so. Okay, we're gonna go back to number two, which is, uh, water project updates. Um, actually, we have, uh, Mr. Keith Walker, he's with, uh, Conti Federal. They are running the, uh, Ryan Drive Superfund site, the water line, and he's gonna give us a little update on that. How are you, Mr. Walker?
Very good. Thank you for having me.
Thanks for coming, appreciate it.
Thank you, Board. We have, uh, had nothing but great experience with the town of East Fishkill since our arrival here in, in the early parts of January. We would, uh, ask, though, that you turn off the rain switch, 'cause we've had a lot of wet weather. Currently, the project is fully staffed. We have, um, made a concerted effort to use our federal dollars on local businesses. We've hired mechanical and plumbing and construction contractors out of Middletown, uh, all through the Poughkeepsie, uh, Wallkill, Wappinger's Falls areas, engineers, plumbers, pipe fitters, suppliers, uh, to the tune of almost nine million dollars so far this year. We are currently at, uh, a field craft and labor staffing of about thirteen full-time employees. Uh, the weather has kind of put a, a damper on some of our scope. The project is essentially a three-year project. It's funded for the main trunk line from the source at the interconnection of, um, Fishkill Road and Hopewell Glen, uh, to cross Wordle Kill Creek and three-seventy-six, run down Railroad Avenue, up the rail trail to Turner Street to eighty-two. And then we will be running on the north, I'm sorry, the southbound lane, all the way up to Francis. We will have a couple jogs, uh, going across. We're boring under the road, uh, under eighty-two at several points, one to a pump station that's gonna be located adjacent the, uh, Old Farm Road West intersection with eighty-two under the power lines. You can see our, our, uh, jack and bore setup is awaiting some utility confirmations. Um, we will be traversing Joanne and Hausner, which is the, uh, uh, return loop back to the system from the storage tank, which will be located at forty Dogwood, uh, at Mountain Pass. It's a three-hundred-and-ten-thousand-gallon tank that'll be in, uh, uh, a manual control mode with the pump station to circulate water and hold a three-hundred-thousand-gallon reservoir in case of emergency fire or in the event of a breakage, there's, uh, supply for up to one to two full days for the residents on the north end of the system. The first phase, like I said, is the trunk line, the tank and the pump station. The second phase is funded for two thousand and nineteen. That will include the branch mains down Old Farm Road, Creamery, Clove Branch, and some of the ancillary roads, Ryan and the neighborhood mains, if you will. Year three is the interconnection. That's when we will, one by one, uh, connect all the residents that are eligible for the water system, uh, to public water supply. We'll be disconnecting their existing wells and decommissioning those in accordance with the state requirements. Uh, we will be, uh, providing them and our customer, the EPA, a site-specific work plan for that house. Every home I've been in so far has a different configuration. The well is inside, outside, under steps, under pavement, in the basement. It, it, uh, varies by the location, by the age of the home, et cetera. But there'll be a, a site-specific plan for each resident. We'll have complete buy-in on the resident. Uh, they'll sign off on a release to allow us to do the work, uh, if they shouldn't. Uh, we have a system in place to notify the town so that the town can impart their, their, uh, say on the benefits of the system and try to convince the resident that it's in their best interest to do so. The project in itself, right now, uh, is a little behind schedule due to weather. We've had, uh, difficulty on Fishkill Road, which is the lowest elevation excavation we'll have on the project. Water levels are about a foot and a half below the asphalt, so we're, we're struggling to fight the water. Um, we've made the decision to move on, cap the pipe where it is in Fishkill and move on to Railroad. We've got dry soil down Railroad and the, and the rail trail, and we've made great success. We're hitting about two-hundred-and-twenty, two-hundred-and-thirty feet a day to include asphalt restoration with a temporary binder at the end of each work shift. We are coming up on our first public relations challenge, which will be Turner Street and the Daddy O's Restaurant. Um, let me just say real quick how incredible the residents have been so far. Um, from allowing us in to do physical inspections for structural, for vibration, to place, uh, monitoring devices and implements to ensure that the work isn't imparting unnecessary, um, uh, damage to their homes and properties. Um, they've provided us wisdom and guidance on utilities and locations of key elements like, uh, septics so that we don't create more problems than we need to. Um, the town has been gracious, permitting process went excellent. Um, the support system here, uh, Gina Grapo's been amazing, uh, in all elements of supporting our project. Scott and, and his staff, the water sewer, safety, uh, highway superintendent, police department has been exceptional in, in working with us on different things, and it's been a real, real pleasure to work with you all. So, um, if there's any specific questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Yeah, could you give an explanation of the water line markers and where they are? I know there's that Fishkill Road, Route three-seventy-six, Daddy O's, and Route eighty-two. People are asking, what are they? And can you give a little explanation on that?
Well, um, the surveyors come in and they stake the center line of the pipe. So from the center line of the pipe, we have a ten-foot easement on each side. That is our work area. If we have to deviate from that, we notify the property owner, we sign, get a signed release or permission, uh, to do so. Uh, in some areas, like along the, the Turner Street, we've got blue markings on the road, uh, which are station indicators. As you can see, that's a pretty tight, narrow road with a lot of bends. There's a lot of fittings that are gonna direct that pipe around the bends and up the hill. So each of those blue markers for us identify the station IDs for those fittings. So when we lay out this, the, the, um, the pre-work, uh, layout for all the piping, we can identify any deficiencies between our survey and our actual design criteria. A lot of the traffic demarcation is fairly standard. A lot of road cones, we have flaggers, we'll be putting up some message boards as we get on to eighty-two. And we'll be closing down some lanes. I ask, uh, that the, the general public be patient as we go through our growing pains on eighty-two and learn how to make the project move as efficiently as we can. Housekeeping, organization, and courtesy to the general public is our priority. And we just ask that as we, and we venture on into these new work areas and feel our way, uh, that we just have some patience, uh, as we deal with the signals and the lane closures. It'll be a minor inconvenience between nine and three-thirty in the afternoon. Uh, after that, we're, we're, uh, packed up and out for the day. I would also ask if the parents, now that our kids are out of school, please educate your, your sons and daughters about the dangers of a construction site. Um, we have the tank site that's inactive right now up at Dogwood. And, uh, it, it's not a dangerous site, but it could be under the right circumstances. It's not well-lit. At night, it could be a problem. Uh, it's well demarcated with fencing, silt fence, signage. We're going to work, uh, with the town police department to, uh, improve our sign demarcation and public information that goes out, push communication out to the residents in the area to help educate, uh, them of the hazards associated with those areas. But, uh, generally speaking, um, aside from the pipe, the traffic, and the excavation limit markers, that's all we have.
I think if I just add, aren't you looking to extend hours earlier for some period of time in next?
We, we, uh, initially wanted to work nights, uh, uh, for a few days during the transition from Turner Street onto eighty-two in the Beekman intersection. As you can imagine, when the lights turn green on three-seventy-six, on the, on the south end of the railroad bridge, and we close down one lane to put the pipe in, there could be some substantive backups. We've had some preliminary conceptual discussions with the police about potentially soliciting their assistance and helping flush the traffic when it backs up to points where, uh, it, it becomes cumbersome to the general public. Uh, we realize we have to be flexible and allow that to happen, but we can't do that with the normal light traffic patterns. So, um, we will be reaching out to you, Nick, uh, to talk about how we can financially compensate your, your town for the support. But at Daddy O's, uh, we are gonna start work at six AM. That is to minimize the impact to the restaurant's lunch crowd, and we'll be out of there by three-thirty, so we don't impact his dinner.
So the overnight. So, the overnight wasn't an option?
It was not an option with the DOT. For reasons that I can't disclose at this time.
Any questions from the board?
So, you said you're behind schedule? Do you expect to catch up?
Well, we're making headway as long as we're dry. So, our plan right now is to get to the pump station on 82, get that yard pipe installed, get the pump station prepared, and then double back to Fishkill and the Wordle Kill Creek Crossing if the water levels allow us. The design is for open cut. We're exploring other options to be able to work with this wet subgrade. And the designer from the government, CDM Smith, has been very cooperative in helping us understand the options and what we can do under the current circumstances. So, we're exploring ways to get back on schedule. The tank site, we did come across some perched water in the hillside. We had to break rock, hammer rock out of the hillside to create a stable work environment so we could place the tank. The company is called DN Tank. They're out of upstate New York, and they've got a really neat vertical tank erection process. It's a pre-stressed wire concrete tank. If you YouTube DN Tank and look at their construction, it's pretty awesome. They'll be mobilizing on August 6th, and they will be essentially finished around the first week of October. So, we'll have concurrent production going on at the tank site and the pipe install. There's also some discussions about if we can't get into Fishkill, starting the pipe on Dogwood and running back down Oak Ridge to 82. We do have an asphalt plant limitation come November, so we'd like to try to get as much pipe in the ground on the roads as we can before they shut down for the season.
So, when you, so the water line comes through Fishkill Road, and the intent was to go across, because I saw that you guys were working on 376. So, the issue that you're finding is right by the, where the water table is over there, beyond some buildings by the bridge. Are you boring through the underground to come from Fishkill Road through 376?
We explored those options early on in the project. Some of the options are more cost prohibitive than others. Jack and boring was an option for 376, and it worked just fine there, but that method, because of the vibration, isn't very good in alluvial soils that are consistent with the stream bed. That's going to have to be open cut or done via horizontal drilling, and those options are on the table, and we're actively discussing them with the Corps of Engineers. The water table is about a foot below the asphalt at that Wordle Kill Creek section of Fishkill Road. We put in a 100-point well system, well point extraction system to de-water on a grand scale. It worked until we got to an elevation about four feet below the asphalt, and then we just pumped in perpetuity. We were in direct communication with Wordle Kill Creek, in my opinion.
And how deep do you have to go again? Was it 18 inches?
We have to excavate to six feet. The pipe has to be installed in the dry. The course specification requires us to have a two-foot buffer of groundwater to the bottom of pipe. It's been very difficult to maintain in certain areas, so instead of fighting it, we know it's going to get dry and hot some point here, we'll let nature work to our advantage instead of try to fight, or she always wins.
Was that something that you expected during the planning stage, or this was just something that came up?
The way the sequence of work was presented by the designer and the Corps of Engineers, the starting point was to correspond with the Town of East Fishkill's interconnection at Governor's Boulevard. And the reason for that was to be able to systemically pressure test the pipe as we put it in the ground. So, every 1,000 feet, we would do a hydrostatic test. The design was set up so the pipe was valved every 1,000 feet. We pressure test every 1,000, and we chlorinate and test every 2,000. We ran into an early changed condition. The design did not account for the concrete box culvert from the Toll Brother development. It was previously a 38-inch CMP, which wouldn't have normally been a problem to negotiate, except for the water, but we've had to take special measures. We're going to work with the Town of East Fishkill to get a survey done, get an easement, and go around the box culvert so we avoid any detrimental effects of construction. Leonard Jackson, architect, engineer, helped us out in understanding how we constructed it, but the asbills are not accessible, so we can't define the subgrade to the point where the method of excavation below might be prohibitive to the longevity of the culvert system. It's not a continuous concrete pore, it's sections, so anything we weaken below could compromise the project. So, going around it appears to be the least intrusive and least expensive option for the government.
And what else? Keith, thank you, and we'll be in contact. Any, with the traffic closures and anything else, you are in direct contact with the police department. Send me anything you need to be posted on websites and other, you know, Facebook pages and any other social media that we could assist with.
Gina's been great with that, and the county as well. Dutchess County folks with the rail trail work we've done this past week have been excellent to get the message out, and the general public has responded. So, we appreciate it, thank you.
Just one more question. How many VMS boards do you have to put out?
Say again.
How many VMS boards are you going to be putting out?
VMS boards.
Like the message boards?
Oh, when we get out on 82, there'll be one on each end. There are requirements based upon flagging, so by having a shoulder lane closure, shoulder or lane closure with flaggers, the requirements for impact vehicles and message boards are variants from some of the work you'd see on the Taconic Parkway. It's a different class highway. So, we've got very detailed traffic control plans that were, I've had a lot of input from the town, and they've been great to follow. They're pretty self-sufficient.
Thank you. Thank you, Keith. So, moving along with the water project updates, Fishkill Plains, the board knows that we have to do an emergency interconnect because we have to rehab the wells there. We have been sending out notices to all the residents in those districts, letting them know what the process is going to be. I met Scott, Brian and I, the engineer, met up with the Joint Water Board last week, and they gave us the approval to move forward for the emergency interconnect, and we currently are working on that, right, Scott? Do you want to give us a little?
We began construction today on Lake Walton Drive. There was a brief period that some of the homes did not have service, but a call out went, did go out, and that service was restored, I think, around 1:00 today. Tomorrow, they'll resume the crossing of Lake Walton Road, so, you know, if you can avoid that area, avoid that area tomorrow. That'll be more or less like the first phase of this. The next part will be the hydrant-to-hydrant connection that we hope to get done next week. We have the agreements that we're waiting to finalize with the county, but we filled out our application and have that underway, so hopefully within the next 10 days or so, we'll be taking water from the county.
And Tom, nothing from the Dutchess County wastewater yet?
Their attorney is supposedly preparing it and sending it to them. It's from the water authority.
So, the water authority gets the, the contract goes between Dutchess County Water and Wastewater and the Joint Water Board for the amount of water we'll be using, and then we have the contract with Dutchess County Water Wastewater. So, that's the process, and we're waiting on the contracts. Worley Homes, we will be having the public hearing for that water district next week, I'm sorry, in two weeks also. We have two public hearings that night. One is about the Hopewell West Water District, which will, is the Worley Homes development. Scott, you want to give us a little update on that, too?
We do have the draft map plan report available online. I just want to mention that we didn't get a customer list from the owner, so we did our best to come up with what we believe are the parcels within that district. So, I encourage people to, you know, take a look at that appendix that lists all the grid numbers. We did put asterisks on around five or six parcels that were not positive or in or out, so we're going to have to, you know, get that, you know, defined before we get to a final. But we are under the audit control threshold currently. We're at $902 per year on average per home. So, again, as supervisor said, in two weeks, we'll have that public hearing, get comments from the public, and, you know, we'll share more details at that time.
So, it was a little difficult, it's a very old system, and it was difficult to get a customer list from the owners. I don't know how that works on their end, but we needed to compile a list of all users. Now, you know, it expanded a little bit further than just that Worley Homes development, a couple houses over here, another business over here, so it's kind of strange, but that's how it is. So, we have to compile exactly who is going to be in this district, who's receiving the water now, because they will be in the new Hopewell West Water District. But we're, the map plan and report was completed by the engineer, thank you, and it is online. Anybody needs to view it, it will be there. And the board, of course, will have copies of that this week coming. Any questions about the water projects or updates?
Just one comment. I've received a few calls regarding the Fishkill Plains emergency project. They were really concerned about how the cost of this project would disseminate down to that district. So, I don't know if we could send out more information during one of our next updates or when it's available.
So, the cost right now, we know that this year there won't be any sort of levy extra. When we reevaluate the water rates for next year, I'm sure there will be an increase. We don't know what that will be yet. Mark, have you thought about this at all or considered anything?
Well, it's sort of a two-part issue. The current thing we're doing for the emergency connection to rehabilitate the wells, and then the longer-term solution with the water supply, and those numbers are still being sorted out. But, I mean, there may be some, but this is necessary to supply water to the district, so there may be some increase.
Yeah, there'll be more follow-up discussions as we get a tighter handle on it. The only other thing I did want to add, it's not on the agenda, but an update, if you recall, about a month or so ago, we had bids for two projects. One was the interconnection to Fishkill Road. That project's been awarded, and that contractor is getting ready to mobilize to make that pipe extension that the EPA is going to connect to, EPA's contractor. The other contract was the well connection from Cannon to our Hamlet facility. Those numbers came in higher than we anticipated. If you recall, we rejected those bids. That went out to a rebid, and we received those bids today. It looks like with our adjustments, we've saving approximately $180,000, so we did realize some savings there, and we're going to ask the board at the next vote meeting to make that award to that contractor.
That's great.
Now, Scott, once you get all the permits from Dutchess County, how much time you think it will take to rehabilitate those two wells or three wells over there that we have in Fishkill Plains?
Well, according to the hydrogeologist, if everything goes, you know, according to plan, in as little as three weeks.
I'm sorry?
In as little as three weeks, if everything goes according to plan. But that's if everything goes according to plan, so.
If it doesn't rain, just joke.
We have a 90-day temporary window with the county, just to be extra.
Careful.
Conservative in case the truck breaks down or this, that, and the other thing. But once they are mobilized and we're actually working, it should only take physically about three weeks to do that work. And while the system is down, we're going to do some other maintenance as well, take the opportunity while the system's offline to do some other repairs, minor repairs, but still, it's a lot easier when the system's offline.
One last thing. I know some people have raised some issues, at least they kind of, I got a few phone calls. While we're using the water from Dutchess County, is that water just as good as the one that comes out of the well, so?
Yes, they've got the new filtration system in, and the quality is great. I know in the past years, there were some issues, but, you know, the water's been good, so there shouldn't be any concerns with that.
Just so that the community knows, yeah.
Yeah, they chlorinate the same way as we do, and they have a state-of-the-art filtration system up there, and there shouldn't be any concerns with that.
Yeah, I saw the building when we went up there. They have a, that was an $18 million filtration building they put up there. It's pretty large, but I have to, my hat's off to the Joint Water Board. They were very flexible with us, and they moved rather quickly. So, I'd like to thank them, and I have thanked them on behalf of the board, and I will give a further detail at our next meeting.
I guess maybe just one thing, I don't know if people are aware, but on Memorial Day weekend, we did have to bring tankers of water, and I think we brought a total of 11 tankers of water, and so we're not even to the hot part of the season yet, so I think this is well that we do this and to avoid it, because it's obviously an expense bringing in tankers.
Yeah, it was a peak demand there for that weekend, and there was no service interruptions because we headed off at the pass and put the tankers in there, so. But this is needed, and we're moving forward as quickly and expeditiously as we can, so. Thank you. Okay, with that, we have open discussion for the board members. Anybody wish to discuss anything? Okay, well, our next town board meeting is June 28, 2018, and that's it for the work session. Thank you very much.